Welcome to the Addison Township Board Meeting. Today is Monday, August 15th at 6:00. We're meeting at the Addison Township offices on King Forty Rochester Road. If we could all please stand up and pledge. Ed, you're a veteran.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stay standing. Dear Lord, guide us to our meeting tonight. Put your wisdom in our words. In the Lord's name we pray, amen.
Okay. Your roll call, please.
Yes, Jacob Newby.
Here.
Karen Galloway. Here. Lynda Garrett. Here. Ed Breakfield.
Here.
Lloyd Fisher. Here. Bennett Plaza. Supervisor Pearson.
Here. We're all covered. Move quickly. Any announcements?
No.
The board reports that you're available in my office. Petitions?
No.
Okay, order of business. Approval of the agenda.
I'm moved to approve the agenda as presented. I'll support.
Any discussion? Non-ary approval, please.
Ed Breakfield.
Yes.
Lynda Garrett.
Yes.
Karen Galloway. Yes. Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Lloyd Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett Plaza. Supervisor Pearson.
Yes. Good senator.
Yes, we have the minutes from June. Approval of the June and July bills is paid. Except the resignation of Doug Lowe as building official. Approved the additional work on the parking lot. Eighteen fifteen, the drunk police fund. Twenty-five hundred from the ARBA funds. And twenty-nine seventy-five from township maintenance. The Addison Township Board Resolutions to Adopt Higher Exemption Income Guidelines and Asset Test. Resolution authorizing the fire department cost recovery schedule.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. We have a need discussion.
I'll just be sorry to see him drop out. But he's still taking, he's still doing his normal inspections, actually, correct?
Funding and heating.
We didn't lose him. He's just up in that department. Okay.
Okay, so we have a roll call on that. We have a need discussion.
Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Karen Galloway. Yes. Lynda Garrett.
Yes.
Ed Breakfield.
Yes.
Lloyd Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett Plaza. Supervisor Pearson.
Yes. Okay, move on to item number two. Public hearing resolution for ordinance 22-1 of cemetery. Board has reviewed this quite a few times. They need an update for the calumbariums. And the board completed a full review of this. At this time, I'd like to open a public hearing. This is where we listen. Once again, I'll open this up to the public. And we'll say we're going to open that up at 6:02. If anybody from the public would like to speak concerning the resolution for ordinance 22-1 for the cemetery, please come forward. And we will listen. I'll ask one more time. If I'd like to come forward and speak about the ordinance 22-1. We're not hearing anybody. I'd like to close the meeting. That will call around 6:03. Any comments from the board on this? Anybody?
I just wondered why we have the calumbarium fee schedules separate from this, where the burial is our in the ordinance, burial fees and ground.
Because we know what those costs are. And that's the same cost that we're currently having. But until the calumbarium's finished, we won't know what the cost is actually going to be. So at that time, there's going to be a new resolution that will include this hundred dollar fee, but then also the calumbarium fee.
So will it be an amendment to the ordinance or just a resolution?
It'll just be a resolution because as it indicated in the ordinance, that all of these types of changes will now be handled by resolutions. Like you don't have to change an ordinance.
Yeah, I read that. But that's why I was wondering why we're keeping this in here.
Well, we're going to be adopting the resolution. And that's where it's going to establish is the rates of that. It's still going to be hundred dollars per burial space for the current burial.
And ground, yeah.
Yeah. And then once the other ones ready, we'll come back and include these three numbers and the calumbarium.
Let's talk to the here, resolution.
Yes.
As it be scheduled.
Yes. Okay.
The one thing I see with this is between either being buried in a plot or in the calumbarium, at the end, it's going to be pretty much a wash as far as the price. Because by the time you take care of all of the opening of the grave and all of the fees that are associated with that, and then you also put a headstone and everything. Whereas with the calumbarium, you're buying just the niche and then the grave right on the front of it. So when it all comes out in the end, they're going to be pretty close on price between either being buried in the ground or the calumbarium. Okay? It's just that I see that people buy the hundred dollar lots because it's a hundred dollars. And they think ahead, well, a hundred bucks, whatever, and I can sell them back. But I do think that in the calumbariums, it will be a little bit slower because people will not want to buy those until it gets close to the actual funeral because there's a lot of money outlay. So, but as far as the price, I think either way you go, it's going to be pretty darn close to the same amount of money in either burial.
I plan on having a chart so that the people can kind of see what the difference is going to be. And it is going to be really close. With that, I'd like to move the resolution adopting ordinance 22-1, Chapter 14, cemeteries.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second. And then we have a discussion of this. Make a vote. Anybody? Get a roll call, please.
Karen Galloway. Yes. Ed Breakfield.
Yes.
Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Lydia Garrett. Yes. Lloyd Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett Plaza. Supervisor Pearson.
Yes. Resolution is approved. Move on to item number three. Review of the revised park plan. We're looking for grants, okay? If some of the money we've got for rescue money is going to be our seed money for improving the park over here. We sent this over to PEA, which is our engineering, and they did some changes on this. We're going to have, what we hold, to have some pickleball courts and some bocce ball courts over here. I did also receive some very nice gifts from some people on the line who wrote some checks to, when they heard we were thinking about that, that they'd like to help pay for that. So I have some nice checks that we should put into a separate fund just for assisting with the pickleball courts and the bocce ball courts. Anyways, requested, we're going to request some funding, you know, through grants and everything. And we kind of like to plan to change it a little bit. A colleague's been working on this. We're looking at a volleyball court in the middle. And then you can see that there's some pickleball courts and then the bocce ball. So anyways, anybody have any ideas that they'd like to share with us about this? Or any comments?
Can I give another thing?
Yeah, what's the future court?
There was discussion in the last meeting that we might want to add another pickleball court. So we put it in there, but we couldn't, as in talking to him, and I do have that benefit, he couldn't move it all the way over like we had suggested because he said that we would actually have to have a retaining wall if we went all the way to the east. But he was able to move it so it's separate from the bocce ball courts. And then if he did want another one later on, it could be put there. He took the trees out that we asked. He moved the peanut type thing around, put in the volleyball court. He recommends that we stay with the type of, like wood type chips versus the other ones due to cost. And then I did contact the DNR. And they said that this type of plan is acceptable for us to go forward with the grant. So I just kind of wanted to share that we will need to have engineered plans or a site plan for the park. We will also need to go out for bids. So what Mike from PEA did was come up with an estimate of cost and a plan of what we would like to see. And then of course, we can always give even more detail once we get to that stage if they pick us. Then we're going to have to have engineered plans and a site plan. So that will be the time that we will really be calling the shots. But right now, it's like, as long as everybody's happy with what we're including, I think he did a great job as far as turning it around again.
I was just going to ask, on the cost opinion, it shows rubber mulch instead of the wood. Is that just?
I didn't catch that. Because he was telling me that he wants to stick with the, he was trying to.
I thought the wood.
Yeah, he told me to go with the wood, but he did a bound rubber mulch. I have to check on that.
How's the polling on the future court? We're looking at the pricing. I see nowhere that there's benches for people that might be waiting in line to watch ball or pickleball.
I believe we asked him to put benches in between the trees. So we have one and two for four benches.
Does he have a line drawn to it?
There's amenities for the ornamental benches.
There's, you have five ornamental benches for twenty-seven.
There's five or four?
Five. And then there's one out at the other end. So he has benches.
Okay. Do you think this would be good enough to make a motion to have you send it in?
Well, the last time we made a motion to have them go ahead and go forward with the grant, so I put it back on the agenda because the state still isn't ready to open up the grant. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody's happy with, kind of happy with the layout and the items that we're going to go for. Because this is what's going to go to the state as well as his cost opinion. And we'll get our dollar amount from that.
If we get the grant from the state, we send it in, and we're starting to build this thing, and we find out something can't fit here or something can't fit there, that's not going to hurt us on the grant. If the grant's done, we building it.
Correct. But they're going to look at it, and we're going to have to say why we want to have this type of facility. And we should have at least those items. The only thing that they're saying is if we don't spend all the money, we have to send it back. And of course, if we go over, which is what we don't want to do, then we're going to, then we'll be in trouble. So he kind of put in a contingency fund. He also added the engineered drawings. The state says we could do that right now, but at the cost, I would prefer to wait until we find out if we're running before we spend that. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Anybody? Yep.
I would really like to see if we're contemplating a third pickleball court of just putting that in in the beginning so that everything's the same color. Because I would imagine it's going to be fading over a couple of years if you're trying to drive in there to put in something in the future. You're, you know, there's not a place to drive in with the tractor. So even if we had to get rid of something else in order to make it fit in the budget, like the horseshoe pits are about fourteen thousand and the bocce ball, or I'm sorry, the pickleballs, I think eighteen thousand.
No, the pickleballs, he's got them for two at eighty-four. So they're going to be forty thousand apiece. They max out at one mil. And I don't, I don't know if we really want to go too much higher because I don't want to get kicked out here.
Well, it's just, I don't see a way to get in there to add a third court in the future. And the way it's set up, that blank space, I feel like it would be a little awkward. And I just think it would look better to do all three at the same time.
I'm fine with two. I'm fine with three. Our neighbors in Armenia, they have two. Quite beautiful. Maybe it would be a benefit to find out if two is sufficient or is it a lineup for? I don't know. I don't know what there is. I know Oxford has a lineup, but their population is much higher than ours. I don't know if Armenia has a lineup for their two courts.
Well, could we put that in as an alternate plan? See, because when you're putting in three courts, I'm sure it's going to be a little bit cheaper than, you know, that's already be there. And it's going to, might not be as much as what the two courts are there. What, they're forty thousand apiece?
Yeah, so this round will be at what, nine, one hundred and fifteen?
Well, the mulch is going to be a lot less. This mulch is not just fifty thousand.
Well, generally, they connect all these together, though. What I'm saying, you know, it's one whole sheet of asphalt. They're all connected. They're not separate.
Yeah, I sent you those pictures.
Yeah, but it's all one.
The fencing, I think, costs a lot, too, because they're all enclosed. I don't care. I mean, if we want to stick it in, we're going to be up to nine hundred and some. And we have roughly a hundred and twenty-five of our seed money.
As we put it in, if we decide not to do it, we can send that under.
Because of that.
And if we adjust the mulch, which this is a cubic yard, four hundred and fifty dollars a cubic yard. I can't imagine that mulch costs anywhere.
I'd have to check to find out if you just type the lump in or that's the rule code for rubber. Because in his email, he was not going to jump.
Yeah, I knew, I read that. He said to wood. But I know that a cubic yard of wood mulch does not cost four hundred and fifty dollars.
But I don't see any matching outfits for the township platers. Do you have any spandex outfits or anything?
We'll put you in charge of picking those out.
So am I good?
I don't look good in spandex.
Looks how you like that everybody likes the updated plans and that we're going to go ahead and put the three courts in? Is that what I'm hearing?
Sounds good to me.
I'll put it in, and let's see. And we can always come back. I think that's too much.
Just don't lose the grant.
They're going to say no. I mean, it's not that it's going to come back. It'll be like, this bid goes out, and they'll base it on everybody else. We'll either get yes or no. Good news is we get to fly again next year.
I've been there. Okay, so we're going to add the third one then, and see how that flies. Have they consensus?
Our consensus are mostly.
Worrying about it being supposed to align and it's going to get rejected versus the eight hundred and seventy-three thousand?
Yeah, because I think it's under nine hundred.
Here's another thing we haven't thought about. Bruce Pearson, the guy who squeezes water out of a rock, probably will be able to get that third pickleball court after he wills and deals and. Okay, road commission, I will give you some gravel if you put in a pickleball court.
We're using federal dollars and we have to do this thing.
I don't have. Bruce.
Just to the point.
We're worth the road money. What do you feel like if we add it, we might lose it?
I don't know. They're asking one million for community.
We'll be close.
But we aren't putting in solid arbor.
It's going to be under that.
So I'll state handed.
Let's say add it. By the time we add, if you take this cost, and we have our, how much do we have in there? We're going to put a hundred and twenty-eight.
I thought we were around a hundred and twenty-five.
Hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So we're going to lower it by a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. And then we do have some donations, so we might be lowering it by, say, a hundred and thirty-five thousand or something. So I think we could add that in there. That is still bringing down.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion if we add the third pickleball court.
Anyone have another one else? You want to put in a motion like if you want to access.
Trees and wood mulch.
Oh, yeah. And wooden mulches, he's already promised us or told us. It's got to be, the pricing's got to be adjusted on that.
So you're.
My motion would be to go for the third pickleball court and to verify that the wood mulch and adjust the price from, what mulch was it? Ash, rubber, wood, price has got to go down. That's my motion. I'm holding to it.
Do we know, I'm sorry, do we know what the price of the wooden mulch is versus the rubber mulch? I mean, it was in his last one, if you want, and. With five or, twenty-nine, twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty was his estimate with the.
What is it with the tougher?
With the five or one was forty-eight. So it's twenty thousand, which is half of, half of the cost of.
It's half the pickleball court.
Yeah. The only problem with the wooden mulch is you're going to constantly refresh and renew it. When the rubber mulch is one and done, usually. He is pushing towards the wood. He said that it's engineered type so that the kids won't pass splinters. It is a softer type wood. It's not like what I originally imagined. I'm like, so he said it is engineered. But yes, you're right that it could, you know, get off of the areas.
The rubber mulch went in sprats. It's really rough. Gets caught cutting grass, and then it's just rubber everywhere.
So anyway, I'm making a motion. We add that third pickleball court. We change it from the rubber to wood mulch and adjust the pricing. That's my motion. Somebody second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion of it? Okay, let's ask for a roll call on that.
Jacob Newby.
Yes.
Lynda Garrett.
Yes.
Karen Galloway.
Yes.
Ed Breakfield.
Yes.
Lloyd Fisher.
Yes.
Bennett Plaza.
Yes. And that passes. Okay, we'll go to the exciting part. Public forum. Anybody in the public would like to speak? Yes, please just state your names so that they get it.
Okay, I live on Lake O'Rourke near Curtis. I'm a little concerned about this park. I think there's going to be a lot of traffic. I think the road is a very bad section of the road for heavy traffic. You've already got the hill. You've already, you've got the curve. I think it's a lot of parking. And I don't know that it's going to help keep this area rural. I think it might just put us on the map work in ways that we don't want to be on the map. That's my opinion. I'm very worried about it. And then if the library goes in across this week, you, you have a lot of traffic on that little entrance. A lot of traffic. I don't like it already the way it is. And now if we're going to add more traffic, I think we're asking for trouble. But that's just my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? This is just where we listen, so thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Okay, and then we'll go to Addison Township Board Reports. Anybody on any of the boards have any updates on any of the?
We have an RFP that went out for engraving of the calumbarium. So I'm glad everybody already responded to that RFP. So I am now going backwards and trying to find somebody who's willing to do the engraving. I have found one company who seems interested, and I need them trying to look around.
Everybody got some connections for you? Oddly, but oddly, I will.
Let me know about those.
I will.
You got to check a little bit later.
No, but I have some clients that are in the cemetery business.
How far away?
All over. All far.
Okay, anybody else? Any other boards? How are you doing on the Frag Mighty's?
The director of SISMA left, so we haven't had a meeting. Erica?
I did drive up to the park there. And whatever we did up there seems to be working because they're all right up. And so hopefully, that's a good thing. And then the cat tails, I did notice, too, that cat tails are coming back on Haven Road and Leonard Road. And I did notice that the Frag Mighty's along the road on Lakeville are gone until you go way farther in off the road. So whatever they're doing has made some progress. So the Frag Mighty's are kind of disappearing, which is, they were overkicked in the area. So I hadn't seen that.
I have a question about that, Bruce. We treated our pond at Station One three years now. Is that enough to do it? Or should it be treated like, because we don't have any this year. So that's really good.
It takes about three years to finally eradicate them. And so we might be good. They just, when we get these grants, like, you know, they want us to for sure do it the first year, but then they want us to make sure that we're going to part that in the second year. And then the third year, we should be in really good shape. I mean, because those, of course, go into the roots and.
Yeah, it was really basic in our pond. It was actually.
It was successful now.
Oh, yeah, great. Worked perfect.
Yes. Okay, anybody else on board reports? Nothing? Okay, any communications at all?
Yes, two. We received one from Choney Deal, and it was concerning power outages, outages near Earlville on Romeo Road. And this one, because we did have a meeting, is all May 17th from the public library with a relief status update that was issued to all of the board.
That's it. Well, then we'll go to the supervisors' report. I just commented, we did have some really, really heavy rains. And I'm trying to work with the road commission. Unfortunately, our foreman was on vacation, and he just called me an hour ago and said he'll be back tomorrow. So I have a lot of really bad washouts all around. So I have a list, and I'll be going around with him and trying to see how I can fix it for the relevant residents. I got a lot of them where the water now is going on flowing into their property and stuff because it's got these caverns now. So hopefully, I can figure out, and we get the road commission out there and do some ditching and get that all corrected. I did notice over the heavy rains that our electricity went out for a short time because I got a call from my son, who was staying at home while I was over in Lake Michigan. And he said, Dad, you know, the power's on. I said, well, take your flashlight out. But it came back on in two hours. So I was very happy because we had a lot of tree damage and a lot of damage around the area. Had yet our electricity. There are only a couple of bad spots. And Leonard was one of them because I did find out that was a tree damage on somebody's private property. So once again, I tell everybody, please let Addison and all their contractors get onto your property and cut the trees. Don't deny them access because everybody's behind you with the petting. The parking lot is finished. Came out beautiful. I would like to thank a company that did that. And they were terrific to work with. I was here every day out there watching them. And they did a really good job, and they didn't strip many corners. I did add another, because we do have now three patrol cars on a service, so I added another spot for the deputies. So all of them can be on the asphalt there now because they were, it was all eroded away. And the ones that they didn't have enough room. So I just added that. They had the equipment here for eighteen hundred dollars. They did all the work. That was a no-brainer. When I started looking at the coming out, the part that I were ended and then over orchard that, when they started grinding, they brought me over and showed me that there was only a pinch of asphalt there on the road. And so I said, that's, I don't know how that ever got, except no wonder it was all falling apart. So I said, just give me a price. And they did. And I guess that was the five thousand. And so I said, just make it right. I don't want junk here. So that went all the way over to the grass area. You can see that was a call that I had to make. But in front of the fire hall, everything was good. So anyways, then I just met with everybody. The county chairman of the county board, Mr. Woodward. And I guess they did go down a point nine five mil transportation countywide. Village is going down in November. All the supervisors and myself, we were all there. I don't think that Addison Township and Groveland Township and Rose Township and Oxford Township, none of us are really getting a whole lot out of this. It's more geared towards the southern end of the county as far as the transportation. They're going to add a route so that there will be a route up M-24, but it stops at Oxford, but nothing comes into Addison Township. So anyways, I will update you on that. So anyways, I will update you on that, that's gonna be on the November election, and a lot of the township supervisors are now giving our opinion on this, and we're trying to find out if, you know, we can opt out, but it doesn't, they're gonna allow us to do that, and I guess they want some money from us, so. But anyways, I will update you on that after, but other than that, that's all that I have at this time, so I will say that the next meeting will be on September nineteenth, and I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll second.
First and a second?
No, Lloyd made the, did you make the motion?
Lloyd did. And all of the favorites, please say aye.
Aye.
Anywhere opposed? Okay, we're on our turn, thank you.